Good evening, everyone. I'll break the silence since nobody had any music tonight. Goodness gracious. All right, we're gonna go ahead and call me in order at this time. Please turn all cell phones, electronic devices to off or vibrate at this time. Mr. Fuentes, would you please lead us in our prayer and pledge, sir?
Lord, we ask you to bless us as a council with the best decisions we came from the city boundary. We say thank you for all that you do for each of us here and continue to bless us. And we also ask to bless our troops overseas. In your name, pray. In your name.
Thank you to the citizens of the United States of America. Thank you to the Republic of which we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. All right, consider approval of the minutes of the January 8th, 2017 meeting, because everybody has time to review. Anybody have any corrections? Everybody turned one correction in. Anybody has any other corrections? Please turn them in, Miss Anita. Everybody good with them?
I didn't notice, I got my name on this.
You did or didn't?
I did it.
Oh, okay. You're now official.
I'm official.
Awesome. All right, now, motion to accept the minutes is presented.
We've got a motion.
Have a second?
Sorry.
Call on favor, say aye. Thank you, thank you. Right, visitors who are not on the regular agenda will be given the opportunity to address the council on any subject at this time. There are a few in this gallery tonight, so is anybody not on the agenda that needs to speak today? Nobody's been in. All right. Darn it, you had your chance. All right, discuss an act of request from City Park Board to install playground equipment at the Gore Park located at the bridge of Colorado River on Hutchins Avenue.
A few years back, someone donated some kind of playground equipment to us, and it's been in storage at the warehouse. And Mr. Nixon, he looked at it, he thinks it's all there, but I think it's gonna be kinda like a puzzle. So...
What's open park?
Exactly. When it's all there. So, if it's all there, we'd like permission to put that up down there, like maybe under the pecan trees. It seems like it's a pretty little, safe spot. So, but I know people go down there and fish, so if they have something for the kids to do down there, it would be pretty nice. So, but if that's not all there, then we're going to purchase something else to go there. And also, I'd like to let the board know that we are doing a trampoline raffle to be given away for the proceeds to benefit that. Uh, it's already been purchased, so the raffle probably, the drawing would be the end of March, I believe. And a few times, Mr. Grimes had told us that he was gonna contact Mark Hoffman at the Highway Department about getting a sign on that corner directing people to Gore Park. Not even locals know that it's there.
Right.
But for travelers coming in to top that bridge and go, hey, there's a park, let's, you know, maybe stop at all sets and get drinks and snacks, maybe stop at Tolliver's and buy a car. But anyway, I'd like, I'd like to see the park used.
Okay.
This is the deal. So, so I guess that's it, but um, I think we need a sign of some sort on the corner somewhere directing traffic to it.
I will allude to that. There has been requests for an Eighth Street sign as well as another street sign downtown. Uh, we've requested at least three months ago, and the state no longer has to by request post-signage. It was done through legislature in order to reduce cost of maintenance. Uh, we are going forward, and the local office has now taken it back. It's made it all the way from district to region to state, back to local, to just do the one and the two signs. To do that, then, we might visit with our local office and see if they would do something as well.
Because it has to have, you know, the right of way and all that, I'm sure, all that.
Correct.
Things have to be met.
Well, if it has to be in there, there right of way, it's gonna be right down on the bridge, for sure.
Actually, yeah, one of my employees said, I didn't even know that park was there. I knew that park was there, but I thought it belonged to Tolliver's. You know, it's another shitty park, so...
They go down there, mow it, take care of it, it's like.
So, I'd like to see it used. If you're maintaining it, let's put people in it.
I agree.
Okay. I think that's it for us.
All right.
Now, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
If you do that, do we have any liability with kids laying along that river?
It's a park, it's considered a park, it's part of the city. So, I mean, it's no different than them being down there on the river. Uh, in the city park, we're down in the park area.
Or the lake. The lake. I mean, it's all underwater, it's bad, so...
That's bad.
No, 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 you're fine, you're fine. I just clarify.
Our liability for recreational areas is basically a heightened, in other words, it's a higher burden approved to show we're negligent. It has to be like closed, and that's for us, so um, as long as we make the park reasonably safe, we'll be okay.
Clarify, what? No, you're good, I just wanted to...
Yeah.
Perfection.
Any other questions?
Also, Sam, uh, there's been some instances that people saw shady stuff going on in the playground down in the park, and Mr. Nixon, I think, was going to order us some signs. If you see suspicious activity, contact, you know, the PD, the city, someone.
Wow.
It's all about putting up surveillance, but we can't do that, so can't afford that.
Well, the signage is the area, and pretty much everybody has a cell phone.
Right, right.
Okay.
But should you, with your many talents, you can install this equipment?
Absolutely.
If somebody, if you can do anything.
Somebody can.
No, that's after he oversees putting the playground.
But you're hitting this thing up, aren't you, on installation?
With playground?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just a, it's a couple of lines.
Oh, okay.
And I'm pretty sure we have all parks except for on boats, the Willach reflection boat and what have you. It shouldn't be a big one.
Nothing dangerous.
All right, motion to accept the request from the City Park Board to install playground equipment at Gore Park located at the bridge of Colorado River on Hutchins Avenue.
Mostly accepted.
Have a second?
Second.
Call on favor, say aye.
All right.
Thank you, thank you. All right, City Council may consider and discuss or take action on an ordinance regulating alcohol sales in the city. You should have a lengthy explanation in the packet as well as ordinances to be presented. And rightfully so, I will delegate this number to legal counsel for heading to present.
I tried to give, uh, after talking with the mayor and the city and city manager, I tried to give as many kind of options in this memo, since this is our, I guess, kind of our initial alcohol ordinance, and so just kinda give you all some ideas. Put, I put in the memo, you know, in the ordinance, I indicated the memo, and so we can always add things that I did not put into the ordinance, and I kinda go through it. I don't want, I don't want to take a whole lot of time, but I'll have enough time for you guys to understand the landscape. I will set your existing ordinance, um, which basically had a, it's just really a couple of parts, primarily the only prohibitions were, uh, we used to, it looks like, alcohol, uh, make it prohibited to consume alcohol in community center in the city park, and we turned around and rescinded that. And so, therefore, I just took that out of the ordinance. Basically, so y'all understand, um, the regulation of alcohol is preempted by state law, and what that means is our powers in the city are very limited. We get to regulate alcohol only where the state says we can. And so, um, bottom line is, is that if we don't say it's prohibited in the community park, center, city park, at your park facility, it's in consumption. And, uh, and so, that's one of the things that I took out. You know, I kinda just go through this ordinance. The hours of sale in your ordinance, what I've added, which was not in your old ordinance, as per said right now, we will follow the standard hours to be open. And you see there for different establishments, you have different hours, just taking lawful and sell alcohol. If y'all desire to extend the hours, you can pass an ordinance and do it. And you see there, the extended hours that you can do for mixed beverages and also for beer. And I've never done the extended hour, we've had a couple of businesses come in through the years and ask for them, but we never granted it. And so, I mean, I would suggest you stay with just the basics, state law to start off with, and then if there was a business that wanted to extend the hours and could show a reason for it, then you could consider it. Okay. Next item on page two there, I deleted that section 412 from your old ordinance, because I just thought it was unnecessary. I also wanted to discuss a little about consumption prohibition issues. Uh, there is a provision in state law which we can petition the TWC, basically to prohibit alcohol consumption, in public consumption in the downtown area. Um, again, I've never done that, but you can do it. Of course, your public intoxication is already prohibited by state law, which at least you can already enforce that. But, you know, if somebody happened to be walking, walking down the street drinking beer, there's nothing unlawful about that.
Correct.
Unless you pass an ordinance or petition like this in your downtown area saying it's illegal to have a beer in the downtown area. Again, I've never done that, but you're, we can do it if you want to. And so, in general, again, PI laws, already Trump intoxication, things like that, there's no necessity for us to pass laws like that, it's already dealt with, um, by state law. And another area where we can prohibit is, is that we can prohibit an open container for the consumption of alcohol beverage on public street, public alley, or public sidewalk within 1,000 feet of the property line and the homeless shelter. Probably don't have that here, or a treatment center, probably don't have that here either. And again, I just wanted to set out your alternatives on prohibiting different areas consuming alcohol. I admit, I, you know, all the cities and all the different areas I represent have never done either one of those.
Let me ask you a question. I know this was asked of me in, in the last week or so, as far as the NHMR, which is right here. NHMR is right here, and then they were talking about, is that considered a learning center? What does that consider? But they also have opposing hours. I mean, that's during the day, the others will be in the evening.
Well, the NHMR is a, is it a, what do they, treatment health issues and things like that, am I talking to?
That, uh, also as far as... Yeah, there's actually that building right there.
Oh, I see, I was gonna say, sorry.
But that's actually a building, so they, uh, actually hold their stuff here during the day, so what do they do? Okay, so it's not like a school, it's not an education.
It's, uh, well, it's kind of a vocational thing, that don't they enable those young people to maybe invest themselves in society with some sort of location? I called him NHMR today, and they told me that. So, in that sense, it's kind of a school, he called it a vocational school. The guy that was head of the stuff in San Antonio.
It's kind of like a vocational, but basically for them to have somewhere to go during the day.
But isn't there some degree of training? I mean, just...
Yeah, a little bit.
Little bit.
I don't think that would fit the definition of a public school. I don't believe so.
No, I was asking, it was asked of us.
That's right.
I was asking about, about it too, and whether it fit into the 300 feet, you know, some of it's the back of the building, not in front of it.
It's 25, 25 feet. From the back of the building to the back of that building is about 20, 25.
Well, I'm gonna be talking about the back of what?
Back of the property, the old burnout here. To that center is about 20, 25 feet.
Right. I wouldn't be real, yeah, the real's within 300, something like that. I don't blame them. It doesn't fit that up.
Education.
Yeah, I don't think it will. I mean, traditional levels in NHMR counseling, providing care, help for people with, you know, health issues, um, it's like, won't be a public school by definition, won't be a private school by definition. The schools are what you think of the schools.
Okay.
And a few years ago, we had an issue come up, Brown was willing to get an alternative school, um, by the Brown Indian School District, where kids that if you wanted to sell wine, for example, you know, for senior year, you want to graduate early, they had like a night school there. Um, but it's, it's publicly funded, it's part of our BISD, that was deemed to be a public school. I mean, we had an establishment that wanted to sell alcohol and food and food, and so we had to get variants to do it. They first challenged, and we had to judge, and the rule that was, it was, there was no issues. But that's what we're talking about, and so, um, it would not be prohibited. And again, remember, these, again, I want to point out to you, on these distance prohibitions, they're solely, they're not a state law issue. If you don't want them, you don't have to have them. And so, that means that you already had one existing in here for public school, private schools, hospitals, and churches, you only can have.
Correct.
And so, um, you just, the proper method, the method of measurement is different for schools versus the hospitals. And so, um, and that, the law changed a few years ago, so a lot of these older ordinances didn't have that, so I added that in there, uh, the different measurements, that the ones basically from front door to front door, ones from property line to property line, for schools and schools and restaurants, basically.
We also got front door to front door, you're talking about basing one another.
Well, it's a tricky measurement method. You have to go from, for example, it was here, we were, uh, the alcohol establishment was from here, and we were prohibited to go out the front door to the property line directly across intersection to the front door. So, it's, it's, it's a...
The reason I'm asking is, is the hospital situation, those front doors would be that each face the highway.
It's one of the real...
They don't face the bus, but...
Just put it up for the...
They have to measure, and of course, it's, I don't know how close they are, but, you know, 300 feet, um, if it's not the, the public school, again, if it's school, the hospital, of course, is front door to front door. So, uh, you can imagine going out the front door, down the property line, across, directly across the intersection, and then the property line is front door, that's how it would go, so. It's not like, as the crow flies, no.
I mean, just in the reasons in here, since we had special people, sometimes pretty close together, you got a few measures, you know? That's why we're, they got the thing, they're gonna fly, you know?
They're, they're...
Yeah, they're over there. There's gonna be some hot people down there once they see you. They're here too, you know, I have to explain to them how those people are...
That's what I was asking, because they face, both face the same direction, but if you have to measure from out the door to the front door...
First down the road, I don't know, by the... Broadway side? Who does the measuring?
He's a machine for Mr. Nixon.
Well, they've got the ABC, they've got a...
Well, actually, what the process will follow any time Mr. Ray works, when somebody goes to get a TBC license, um, that license application will come to the city secretary typically, and will, she'll, it'll have a little blank in there, so basically our sole role, is this in a prohibited location in the city? And so, we'll have these 300 foot, and so, you have to say either yes or no, and so somebody on her behalf has gotta go measure, and so, then she'll say yes or no. And that's, if you say no, then they get the license, no problem. If they, if you say yes, they can certainly see the variants from ours. And so, that's how it works.
So, that, uh, if that was the case, back when they had just the alcohol to sell in stores, it's different now?
No, that's exactly how it was, it's been for a long time.
So, if they can sell it at Picking Pack, which is a store across the street from the masters, then okay, sell it at Oxford?
Well, no, I mean, you have to measure in the same way. Are you saying that one, oh, you're saying one cup of variants for it?
So, they already stopped.
So, you have stores selling...
Got your variant, where? So, they're already good.
They come from the hospital, they're already...
Sure.
That would measure.
Yeah.
I don't really answer, I don't wanna answer that. Each business will be dependent, if they already were selling alcohol now, of course, your grandfather's in the ordinance. Now, for the next time, grandfather, you'll know that's for length of your, your license, so that means after two years, they'll have to come in quietly, right? For us, they don't get variants if indeed they're prohibited.
Well, if y'all remember when the conveyor stores, they got their license, they had to move that front door.
Yeah, that's what I was like, yeah.
Check in the middle.
They moved it further down. They satisfied the 300 foot rank.
Does it used to be closer to the middle of the building, or they moved it further to the left?
Yeah, because there was a church on that corner.
Of course, there is.
Still watch. I'm always wondering, is the white church, the white church?
And that's, that's a frequent way to get around the...
So, now that we're opening up single wide sales, should just do with variants, I mean, do away with the distance and quit worrying about variances?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, we have to follow state, so we...
No, these are not, these are not state, there's nothing, we don't have, we don't adopt them, it basically, state law allows us to adopt them, doesn't require us, and so, no, you don't have to.
It's kind of avoid a bunch of happening, like, every five minutes, we're gonna be checking all the variants, or no, we're just ignoring them.
Oh, we gotta do what we gotta do. Special space, you have a question?
Yeah, well, that's basically what I was gonna say, these variances are basically self-imposed, I mean, y'all set them, but, you know, you set them yourselves. Kind of what my thing was, is if somebody is already running an existing business, they don't sell alcohol currently, but they're in the process of doing it, I would think if they're already running a business currently, that they should be allowed to do it, you know, instead of having, say, say the measurement is off by four feet, Phil's not gonna go in there, rip out his door and put it, you know, on the other side just to, you know, just to have some beer, you would, I wouldn't think, I mean... He might do it, but I don't think, I don't think the city should make him do that. In, in other words, I don't think we should make a business...
But that's a TBC thing.
It's, it's all self-imposed, TBC does not have...
The 300 feet is not a TBC statute.
Well, it's the state law that allows, it's never, since state law prohibits city law, basically, it tells you, what's your, you know, and you can establish prohibitions within 300 feet of the public school, private school, public hospital, so, no, you don't have to. Um, you know, through the years, except the only time we ever had problems with that in the public school, it wasn't a traditional public school, and I didn't think that that was a regular school, since kids didn't walk up to it, and it was primarily hospital students, and, and they felt like it wasn't the same. And, you know, bottom line is, our city council, various problems, the school district came through and said, we don't want you to sell, allow alcohol. So, I'd say most of the time, you're probably not gonna have a problem granting variances. You know, sometimes you'll have certainly churches, some kind of churches, they don't want to sell any within 300 feet. I mean, these are the typical, I'd say, most cities have adopted these 300 foot prohibitions, don't know many that have. I think the variance process, again, is within your total discretion, there are variances, there's no right to variance, uh, it's basically within your complete, this council's total agenda, you can waive it anytime.
I think we don't have some kind of bill in there, we're gonna have more trouble. He, he said if we do away with 300 feet, or don't do away with 300 feet, people are gonna be hot, but if we do away with it, then you're gonna have people hot on the other side, so we're caught between.
Yeah, exactly.
My front door from deep master to the hospital's 200 feet to measure it. Get it?
That's a straight line. And that's a straight line, but if we follow the way that they're telling it...
It's not really...
It's not, it's basically come out of the...
Front door to the hospital. And then go back to the... Top line, top line, the restaurant. And then, yeah, bottom left is that little church we're talking about, bottom line, that store that sells it too.
Right, yeah.
See that little church? They may not want somebody opening a store up right beside it.
Yeah.
Well, they already got, of course, our grandfather in there, yeah. But Phil, you know, went on for two years until they had an accident. These are things that I thought of, and he brought it up, but it's exactly what I was gonna bring up, is this is the exact scenario, it's...
Or the new business. Yeah. Well, I think that's, I mean, I think that's why you have a variance process, because certainly for existing, you know, obviously, if you've got a, say, for example, in a restaurant, now I can sell alcohol, and they're there, I mean, you want them to be able to do it where they can to get the revenue, that's why...
They're as long as up in here.
So, while you pass the elect, you know, electors over the name, and so, that's when you grant variants, you know?
Yeah, but they should have the ability to grant a variant.
Correct.
If it came, if they came passed.
Right. And then if a new business is coming down, this will give you the ability to say, don't build right there, build just a few more feet down.
Right.
And that's, I mean, I think that's kind of...
These are most cities that opt for the 300 feet, you know, using the variances as we did.
I said, I, I, you know, it depends on what you say. You can have multiple problems right now with which require variances.
Right.
Brown, we've never had variants ran there. We only had one of the ones on all the...
They might decide to sell, that's where across the two churches, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just saying, it's like boundaries, everybody's...
We have a lot of churches.
Church direction, our church direction, you know?
25 restaurants.
Oh, yeah.
Two churches right there. And then, I mean, I don't know, I didn't see a sign, I was just opening another restaurant.
Right, somebody's mind.
Yeah. I mean, I learned a lot.
But, you know, I say really good as it is, and then they have to come in for a variant, but we have to, you know, say yea or nay, depending on where it's located, depending on...
I don't have a lot of new construction, so probably just have a few doable.
But I think we're really gonna have to deal with those that are already here, they're already attempting to do so, as far as, you know, already established.
And some definitions there, for your, like, federal public school, the public hospital, the churches. The permit required process, that's what most of the ordinance existing was now, and basically, state law was penned out a year ago with cases, and so, cities can't require a permit to be issued by the city to sell alcohol. Um, and so, really, what I kind of changed up, um, most of your ordinance now will be, it really isn't much of a change, some of your, they'll still come in, they'll get to Bonita, um, their state permit that they've obtained, and of course, they'll already come to y'all and all of the sign off and the location of the city, so that's the first step. And the second step is, she basically, they're gonna show the state issued permit, and they have to pay y'all whatever permit fees you're entitled to. And the ordinance basically tracks state law, which says you're entitled to one half of the fee that is charged for the state permit. And so, um, there are some exceptions to the permit fees that you don't get on the first two years, but they're basically a fee to on this, and I can get those to Bonitas when he's part of administering this, so you, I guess you probably already done it before in the past, so, um, well, basically, they pay the fees to us, show that got the state permit, basically, still is issued in your receipt, and they have done their thing for us, and we now have the registration, and basically, of course, the law itself. Prohibit the location, again, those with the 300 feet you talked about. The one thing I did add, and again, this is, this is something you might not want to keep in the ordinance, is I added, there is a, and they're in section C on page three of the ordinance, where within 300 feet of a daycare center or a childcare facility. And that's something, I'd say that is not standard, um, put that again, um, standard in most cities adopt are public school, private schools, public hospital, the church. This is a little bit of a, I'm not saying it's not adopted by many cities, several cities that represent it, but again, it is, I'd say, a second tier, um, if you don't want to do that, I don't know if you've got any daycare centers and childcare facilities, um, near, um, places that might be selling alcohol, but again, it's the same 300 foot. There are pro, and there's, there's some exceptions there, for example, um, this wouldn't prohibit like food and beverage holders, or restaurants, we'd prohibit them from selling. Typical liquor store, convenience store selling beer, and those would fall within the 300 feet, and that would be prohibited, um, from selling alcohol.
I'm thinking of like the lanes, also, somehow.
Yeah, I think that's...
Is it blocked?
Yeah, at least it's blocked, a block, and then after more, front door to front door.
But again, I believe it's, it's a situation where, well, we can grant a variant, but this would give us something to start with.
Right.
I agree. And the same thing with regard to prohibited locations, the next page, um, state law allows us to sell, prohibited to sell beer in residential areas, um, and so, basically, what this ordinance says essentially is, is that we will not allow alcohol sales in R1 and R2 zones, which I think that's pretty standard for, for most places. two zones, um, which I think that's pretty standard for, for most places, you know, like, um, so I'll have two zones, R one and R two for residences.
Correct.
And so.
We also have what we consider the commercial zone, right? We have commercial R one that's mixed along Broadway and Hudson, no?
No, neighborhood business.
Neighborhood business, yeah. And that's the one, and so I guess the second step of that is, is that we now need to adopt in our zoning code where we're going to allow the sale of alcohol, of course, I would, like, basically, the only one we can really control specifically are bars, where you sell over seventy-five percent of your alcohol, or you're selling for alcohol sales. Um, so, to me, the next step we need to do on this is, is build your zoning ordinance, P and Z, I'm recting them enough, basically, we said, you know, convenience stores selling alcohol, um, places selling beer and wine, and go through the list, and, you know, cut into each zone specifically. What do y'all think about my suggestions there as far as, uh, do you want to allow bars? To me, the only one that was a question was the neighborhood business district. Um, do you want to have all sales alcohol allowed in neighborhood business district? Or just convenience stores, liquor stores, restaurants, they're selling, um, or you want also allow bars in neighborhood business district? Or do you want to just allow any sale of alcohol in your, uh, neighborhood business districts, you know, industrial district, including neighborhood business district?
You're looking at me?
I was expecting you to say something.
Oh, I don't know, my opinion would be keeping bars downtown.
Or business districts.
Also, some of them, I don't think on that person.
Well, that's convenience stores.
Yeah, convenience store.
Not the assumption, you're selling it, but it's not, you're not allowed to consume on.
Right, right, right. Most of, of neighborhood business districts, most of convenience stores are selling beer right now.
Right.
So.
But a bar would be a consumption site, not just a sale, so, it's both.
What's considered a neighborhood business district?
Well, I guess like.
Is that a bar?
Well, we have home, then businesses up in the middle of the road.
Or maybe.
Is that right?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, property.
Yeah, that's where I'll sit.
Yeah, yeah.
All the way out, one or a lot of people on both sides, all the way out to the, to the limits, okay, I see.
No, thanks. So it's R one commercial, right, or business?
Well, just R one or R one, R one and two, you're strictly residential.
Right.
Uh, and then neighborhood business, and, uh, simple business, and, and duffel.
So we're thinking industrial, everything, of course.
Right.
Um, I would think your separate business district, how you get everything.
Okay.
To me, the only issue is neighborhood business, and I, and again, uh, you know, it used to be, in the old days, you had maybe a bar, some people didn't have to go that far, so, I mean, it's, it's purely what you.
We're gathered, you're gonna go in that party, five minutes, you can be in a, you can use it in neighborhood stores too, you can have one down there in the ice, you know, they like to go around, love it, but really, not there at all.
Well, if you don't have hard, hard feelings about it one way or the other, and I just allow in all zones except for your R one and R two, and that's, I mean, that makes it simple, zoning wise, makes it simple for your, um, businesses, but, you know, it's up to you.
What do you want me to say, tell me something you think?
Yeah.
What do you have to say?
You say, you got, right here?
I was, I was, I wanted to hear from Chief and Steve as far as, y'all been working on the cost as far as that.
I've, I can just see it just downtown, um.
Try to keep it.
Keep it centralized downtown, you know, crosslanes, you know.
That's very consumption stuff, you know?
Yeah, I heard consumption stuff.
Yeah, I like, I, I agree with you, I, I like neighborhood business should be out of that, everybody would touch the door, I think.
Yes, sir.
I have a quick question, say, somebody purchased a city house, makes it a dance hall, that's restricted?
Was that, was that one of those little variants, I mean, is that, what, what is it located in neighborhood business?
Uh, where it lies, um, well, you said it's a block deep on each side, I think that's just right outside that first block.
Half the block.
The first block.
There's just one block, basically, goes, goes to the house.
Okay, so, yeah, so if somebody wanted to turn the skate ball, let's into it, a dance hall, I mean, could the city grant it, or would it just be strictly prohibited, and then you would have to change?
You would be prohibited.
I'm like, skate ball, actually, an R one, wouldn't it?
I was thinking it was, I thought you knew.
I mean, it's an existing business, so, I mean, I just.
Answered, did it after the reason, it, it's zone R one, it couldn't, if you had a change in use, it wouldn't come out of the R one, couldn't locate it there unless you rezone it, something.
How difficult is that to rezone?
You have to go through P and Z, and, and that's recommended, and the council has to approve.
Okay. Those still like going through the variance process?
It's doable.
Okay.
And, well.
Any other questions or comments?
Funny ideas, what, what's your brothers about, uh, rezoning or allowing a bar in neighborhood business?
In neighborhood business?
I, I mean, I, I mean, the first time I had a problem with it, I just.
But I have a problem with it, but if.
I guess if we have a bar downtown, we have a bar up there by Deep Masters, and, you know, we just happen to have a fight at both times, you know, we're not, I mean, there's only two officers on the road, we can't, it'll be a little hard.
Right.
I'm just saying.
No, I understand, I agree with you.
It's a little hard.
Productively, trying to keep it centralized, at least you're in the same district.
Centralized, and of course, a lot of dancer, you know, security, whatever, you know, so.
Okay.
I mean, it's up to y'all, but, I mean, that in my mind, staffing and everything, it's a lot of the downtown.
Andrew, Steve?
Yeah. What about the industrial, is that outside?
That's south, uh, south of Hudson, and, uh, out towards San Angeles.
Are you going to use a bar out there? You would not allow it?
No, I mean, I mean, I think we do, there's a purchase, all of a sudden, they're out there, so. I'm not like, going back out there, unless we.
Yeah, that's just what we're about.
Yeah.
You know, stay at a hotel, buy a bottle, can't go to the bar.
Yeah, they can't go to the bar, and then, they're together.
Yeah, that'd definitely be a variance if you're gonna do so, of course, that's commercial, so.
So bars only in the central business district?
Unless applied to a variance or, you know, something.
You can even open for a variance.
Right.
It's not really a variance, and that, this is gonna go for, we're gonna do it from here, we're gonna basically put this, um, on the P and Z commission, it'll come back to you, you'll get it.
Right.
Um, and basically, if somebody came in and said they wanted to put something in a zone, um, sell alcohol, then you'd have to consider rezoning or changing up our zoning restrictions.
So that area, you have for that, say, like the skate ball, is he talking about?
Yeah, if there's new business or something, you know, they need to come in and talk to the city manager, the city secretary, let's kind of check the zoning, see if it's okay, and if not, they can just rezone.
And then what is, uh, what Chrisy brought up as far as if there's a hotel or hotel that's built out here, and they wanna put in their own bar within the facility?
Well, that's why I would allow, I mean, that's why I think that's, I mean, I would look at it part past as, I wouldn't do a whole lot of rezones unless you think it's important.
Yeah.
I mean, to me, industrial areas, usually you allow, first of all, by definition, that's, you know, to me, alcohol sales are typically, we don't want them right next to your residential areas, most home, I don't want to have a bar necessarily, but.
We already have shops out there, and liquor store up there, not a little.
Well, I mean, I would allow, I would allow bars out in the industrial, that's, that's me, just mainly because, like she said, if that's an area where you could have, um, hotels and things like that, that would make sense, so allow also in the industrial.
All right.
And then signage, uh, was one of the things that Chief had mentioned, it is, uh, kind of proposed changes, we're very limited in what we can do on signage, in fact, very, very limited by P and Z already, so I think we're fine with that. So that's what your ordinance does, that's the track, state law, and, uh, allows us to do, basically, most of the, any questions?
Anybody have any other questions concerned?
Liz V available on my website.
As soon as everything goes through legal, comes back from sign board, and she okay's it, he okay's it, court puts it on the website, on the new ordinance.
All right. And these are going to, also Franklin eventually, they'll send this to Franklin, they'll, we're going through a complication too, so eventually, a code will all be too on Franklin, so, okay. And so that's kind of one, one of the things I did, just so y'all know, now on, we'll literally have an ordinance, everyone has this kind of verbiage, because that's what they'll track, that's what Franklin will watch you to do.
Okay.
Amending our codes and everything, it makes it simple for them to handle the complication.
So they know what they've done, what we've changed, and that they haven't thought of that yet?
Exactly.
Okay. Yes, sir.
She's basically prohibiting R one, R two in neighborhood, is that what, I'm understanding everything else is.
Well, the only thing, neighborhoods, you won't have a bar there.
Right.
For consumption, yeah, for.
That okay?
Yeah, everything else is open for business, whatever.
Anything else? No? All right. Do I have a motion to accept the ordinance regulating alcohol sales in the city as presented with modifications as we requested, to Mr. Tusk?
I'll make the motion.
Now a second? All in favor, say aye. All right. Thank you, thank you. All right. City council may consider, discuss, or take action on accepting a donation of property located on South Eighth Street from Sheila Bankworth, Lila Striften and Paul Lots, six through ten, block forty-one, original edition. You should have that legal paper document, your Dean, there you go. Now, Vandy, you know about this, or from either? Steve does, okay, I'm sorry, Steve. You know about this?
He does.
Okay.
Yeah, she called over there, and we, she has owned any prop, other properties too.
Okay.
I think they're, they're getting tired, laying down them, laying tact and stuff, so.
They put a little valve in the valve, yeah, back down here on Eighth Street.
Okay. You know where Bronson Block?
Yeah.
It's across the street and down.
Okay.
So it's only lots six through ten, or block forty-one, or like that? I talked to her, I got the D, um, the D records, and so I, I don't know if you're on that. So I'll drag up a gift, the, if y'all want accepted, first thing I ask, Mr. Nixon, was any kind of old, you know, gas station, or ground storage tank, you know, that one?
Anything we get stuff with?
Yeah.
I don't know where that you are.
And that's what he said, we'd be, we'd be like.
About some any question or comments concerning the property?
No.
All right, I have a motion to accept the donation of the property located on South Eighth, Eighth Street from Sheila Bankworth.
I'm not good.
Do I have a second?
Yes, sir.
Which one? He did? All right, all in favor, say aye.
All right.
All right. All right, city council may consider, discuss, or take action on ordinance regulating mobile homes, manufactured home, or travel trailers, including prohibiting travel trailers over ten years of age, and mobile homes in the city that was involved. You should have the information that is an ordinance and Pat has reviewed as well. Pat, did you want to do it on this, or?
Yes, please. In the original, um, ordinance that council passed, not any of, I guess it passed a few years ago, and, and actually, it itself is not protected, and, uh, and so looking at this, and I refracted the ordinance, the only concern I had about was prohibiting manufactured homes over ten years of age. And under state law, basically, um, from my understanding, looking at your zoning code, we allow manufactured homes in, first of all, clarify what manufactured mobile homes are, our only ordinance said mobile homes.
Mm-hmm.
Mobile homes by definition, by state law, is only, uh, what we, mobile home built prior to nineteen seventy, seventy-six or earlier. Uh, now, what you, when you see a mobile home, it's a, called a manufactured home, everything built after seventy-six, seventy-six now. So, um, most cities just outright prohibited mobile homes almost prior to seventy-six, because those were not built according to HUD standards, typically have substandard dangerous wiring, and so what I did in this ordinance is, I went ahead and said, we're gonna prohibit mobile homes. So it's not as bad as you think, it's not prohibited manufactured homes, prohibited mobile homes. So I changed that up, added the definition to mobile home, manufactured home, to make sure we got that right in there. Um, manufactured homes can only be, looks like in mobile home park, or manufactured home parks, is that what you're hoping to do out there?
There, well, they are two.
R two, yeah. Well, basically, um, if you have them zoned up, like, state law says that any time you have something, even if you had zoned an area where it's not supposed to be, if you've got a manufactured home, you can replace it with a manufactured home as long as it's new, and what you got, and at least the same size. So, your state law prohibits us from just, kind of like banning, continuing, uh, manufacturing. So I took that out, and basically said, you can't bring in a substandard or nuisance of manufactured home.
Okay.
Uh, and that's, we had developer, and we were bringing in, um, manufactured homes that were bad shape, and went, sit there, and actually, not fit, living in, and sit there for a long time, and so, uh, we just tag them like a substandard building ordinance and prohibit, and say, um, so, you know, that's kind of what I think, you know, Mr. Nixon, as he does his work, if he sees something that's dilapidated, out of shape, he was able to look at it, uh, see if it's a nuisance, and so, and address it, and like, that's basically all we're offering when you can regulate manufactured homes, that are protected in your state home. Uh, and so that's kind of all the change I would have made from the ordinance, is, it got that ten years.
So that's on the manufactured homes, but not mobile homes?
Yes, sir.
And then also, there's a difference between manufactured home and modular homes?
Correct, I didn't even deal, we didn't even deal with modular homes.
Okay.
And, uh, they're a whole different animal.
So manufactured would be allowed in R two, modular would be allowed in R one?
Yeah. And no more mobile homes, which probably don't have any anybody, which might, um...
Well, pre-existing grandfather, anything from current, you know, time up and forward is changed.
That's correct. So that's what I did, is basically, uh, mobile homes for dwelling purposes, not allowed, aside from the challenger, again, if you have a grandfather, um, I did put down here that they, if they do have these pre-existing things, and violation ordinance, they would register them with y'all, I mean, that would be something I think will help in the forces with that, and that way, uh, if somebody has a, a ten-year-old existing travel trailer, for example, um, we need to know that, that way, um, you know, they got it, they keep it, otherwise, if seven one shows up, and you could say, that was not pre-existing.
Okay.
Um, so trying to, try in some way, uh, and for exception E, the G there, basically, to give us the ability to help, allow them to grandfather their pre-existing travel trailers and mobile homes. And so basically, prohibit the travel trailer over ten years of age, um, also said that, uh, manufactured homes, mobile homes, and travel trailers cannot be used as storage rooms, if it's, you have previous, or for, or for non-dwelling purposes, such as offices, except for manufactured home, the travel trailer for temporary office space, construction sites, is that?
Right, construction sites is okay as far as it being temporary, because they have the, so that's usually a six month at a time.
Exactly.
So we can have, you know.
And so I didn't figure you want some people just using these for, um, offices and just setting them up, so, that would be prohibited, except for buses, so that way you want people just bringing them in for storage, things like that. So that manufactured home or mobile home and travel trailer just can't be used for storage of office, it's for other non-dwelling purposes. Next thing is that, once the travel trailer exceeds 10 years of age, you cannot move another address and see them, it's exactly what your ordinance said, unless they leave that, see them, it's a boundary. Again, title showing the vendor number of travel trailers that they make in your model must accompany the building permit, so that way it tracks the age of the travel trailer. Again, we have exception, which was in your existing ordinance as far as the little change of mobile home provision, now that's in there now within the travel age requirement, so any one currently existing mobile home or 10 year old travel trailer is grandfathered in a boundary. And basically they should register that with the city's coming forth. That's something I will consider on the website, you know, to remind people if that's what you think, that's why you can protect your grandfather.
Right. Any questions?
Oh, I got one here.
Yes, sir.
Pat, I'm registering on the, just so that we can keep up with all of them, we need to have everyone correct them?
Well, if everyone who has a pre-existing, for example, that goes where is a good question, if you've got a travel trailer that's seven years old, for example, today, at some point it will be two old. So what I would do is, at the very least, once they get to 10 years, they need to register. So if they've already had it there. So, they can, everybody can register if they want to, let you know they got a travel trailer, but they don't have to, and I'll be able to track it. It's not a perfect, the registration system will just allow you, because through the years, my experience has been people have the same view, I always have that. You know, I know Valverde's a small town, and you may know, but Valverde, Rattler's not that much bigger, and we still have people say the same thing all the time, I had it here or I had it there.
Yeah.
And so it just simplifies the code, of course, and obviously it's not the rule, if that can be simplified. So that's, that's the spirit, I mean, at least let you know, that way less of you in the big opposition, I would rather try and force it. That's the spirit.
What is, what is the church question on that? Someone had one part from that that said it's for recreational, is that difference in someone's getting it or storing it or?
That's a good question, I don't, is that, right now, the way the ordinance read before, it just dealt anyway, that's, I didn't ask that question.
Yeah, I think, y'all, just recreational, you know, I don't think you can put in that stuff.
Okay, that's what I say, so what are these used for? Living?
Well, someone living in one, or an office, you know, we've had requests in the back door, someone wanted to.
It's a, it's a storage. Well, we need to, I do need to make that change in here then, because we just said no travel trailer, 10 years, maybe we allow inside the boundary for dwelling purposes.
Dwelling or office? Dwelling or office or?
Yeah, I think we already, we said the dwelling part, I think is, they just said no, in the old ordinance, they just said no travel trailer, 10 years. So I wondered about that, I mean, so if you just have a travel trailer, these can?
Yeah, I don't think we would.
Yeah, our old RV, we'd have to get rid of it.
If this, we adopted the ordinance tomorrow, somebody goes and buys a travel trailer and they're living in boundary, they're 10 years down the road, they decide to downsize, then all of a sudden, their travel trailer that they've been using on vacation is 10 years old and we're telling them they can't have it in the city.
Not to live in.
That's why I'm saying, he has to modify that.
Yeah. To, to, well, where do we allow travel trailer to live? R2?
In R2H?
Uh, they're in R1. There's a park put up there years ago before they started trying to, you know, keep up their stuff. There's one in R2, and there's one out there in industrial.
Are they like RV parks, is that what we're talking about or?
Yeah.
A little map for those, or those? These zones, the zones?
Yeah, these are the big ones.
Okay.
But again, those were, those were put there, you know, years ago and before it started trying to keep up their stuff. The walk on 11th Street, one part of it I think is in R1, and other parts across the street in R2. But we've told them, no, I'm sorry, it's all in R1, both sides are R1. And we told them as they move them out, you know, or I condemn a couple of them up there, they can't reflect, they can't put them back.
Would that be a grandfather type deal? Well, I don't, I don't remember your R1 or.
Well, that's prohibited in R1.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, but except for these RV parks, that's what I was figuring, they're actually, I don't know if you've been to Gulf Light, or Gulf Light, if you drive into town, if you come into town, there's literally a, there are travel trailers that are put on, it's kind of the same.
People treat it as what it looked like?
Yeah, yeah, they're just a travel trailer park, basically set up by one man who just owns that apartment, says, "That's my apartment." Pretty usual, but, you know, it's a little different than what you call an RV park. But I think we did elect that change in here. Please, can you write it aloud inside for dwelling purposes?
Correct. And if you want to add the recreation, it's not?
Yes.
How would you agree that?
Yes, sir.
Somebody have any other questions or concerns concerning this? Yes, ma'am?
Is there some kind of loophole or something that people are, like, there's a mobile home that was just put in a couple of years ago, and I, I mean, I don't expect it to be undone or anything, but it's obviously a double wide mobile home in a R1 that was just put in right by the baseball field on 12?
Yeah, that's a south one too.
Yeah. I mean, it's obviously a double wide.
You tell them what the ones, no one there been in? They moved it there, well, that's not, that's not.
It's a double wide, there's a seam down the middle.
No, that's a building.
It's a, on this, construction office type of thing.
Yeah.
Little construction office.
Yeah, it's not really a double wide, it's, that's a building. But, you know, they moved it there and that.
And hadn't anything with it?
We had it up, we could go up there and move the whole.
Now, what dictates what's a building and what's a mobile home, because I mean, it's obviously a mobile home that was.
It was moved in on a truck.
Moved in the whole piece.
There's modular, as we spoke about, there's modular, there's manufactured, as you spoke about, that takes place in mobile homes, and it's all in the certification of the plates of where it's built and how it's built, and if it follows and how it follows the law. So, yeah, it's, we got into that a couple of years ago.
Well, essentially, the wheels are still high. Wheels and tongue hatches a lot, essentially, because I live in a manufactured home. With my insurance, you know, if the tongue and the wheels are still connected with the axles and everything, it's still considered mobile. So.
But when they move them in, they usually take the wheels off, tie them down.
A lot of times they leave the axles on.
So then is it changed?
It's still a manufactured home, no, it's, it's still, if you take off, it's covered, you can put it on.
Right.
It's still a manufactured home.
But I mean, with my insurance, if we took everything off, our insurance dropped down to it's considered.
It's more.
It's considered a home, that's why insurance is.
I was trying to figure out, because people ask me at real estate, well, can I put, you know, X, Y, Z here, and I tell them, no, you know, that's a mobile home, but if the wheels are off, it's not, I don't know exactly what.
It's, it's, Chris, it's really in the certification of the building itself and the manufacturer, it's all by law now, and.
So how do I find, like, how would I tell a customer? I mean, a driver?
Are you basically just classifying mobile homes as anything built before 1976?
Or manufactured?
No, it's basically, mobile homes have now been transitioned to manufactured homes, which is still built similar to what it was, but they're not a modular home, there's still a difference in the way they're built.
Right.
Okay, but a modular home, by law, in the state of Texas, is allowed in R1, as we found out a couple of years ago.
Right, they're usually in, they look like a house.
They have to be built by different procedures and criteria.
But a manufactured home?
They have a HUD certification on it, it just, you know, it has a plate inside there that tells, you know, when it was made, what meets the criteria, and basically, when it's built brand new and comes out, all we have is rules, where we can put them at, we can't tell, we can't say we don't like it, we can't prohibit them, we can't locate them where we want to have M8, various actions. Rather we remain to zones. But some people have them R2 or wherever you want to allow them. So, it's basically, I'd say, any, you know, mobile homes, just think of it, they're a really old manufactured home, I mean, there, you probably don't see too many of them, they're usually a little single wide, about eight foot wide, but you can have manufactured homes that's eight foot wide too, almost a double wide. But it's really the age of them, the term, and basically, you know, if it's an M8 manufactured home, we have to make sure it's in proper areas, so we have to check.
So, a manufactured home, like a new one, people can only put in, where, R2?
R2.
R2, okay, okay.
Modular, by definition, is allowed in R1.
They, yeah, they can be anywhere, okay.
Because it's very long.
Lot of discussion of people talking about bringing in a neighbor's back home and putting it in a neighborhood where it distracts from all the rest of the neighborhood, and D values there, and so how do we approach that?
They have to come in and get a building permit, once they come in and get the building permit, we're now with our building permit, we're asking for pictures, age, and a few other questions that we haven't asked them past, they got us into this, and so we're asking those things and we go out and look at it.
The reason I'm asking is because, I live on North 15th, that area across the street is vacant, I mean, there's no, Rick Sonberg lives over here and, well, there's videos on the other, but they each own half of it. If there was one of them to sell that, somebody wanted to bring in two manufactured homes there, that'd be a lot, you know what I'm saying? What I think, that is, you know, I think in y'all's D restrictions, you know, which we can import, you know, that's, that's something that.
D restrictions for, you know, wasn't there?
Do you have D restrictions over there? I don't think.
On the outside, yes, I think hopefully, we have to.
Oh, oh, yes.
But over there, that's almost, that was a home, so, that's the one that used to be, the next one on the corner.
Oh, yeah, on the corner.
That's, it's not grass on the corner down there.
So you wouldn't be able to do anything across the street? Unless there were D restrictions for them.
Is that, that area out there in that part, no, uh, shut there either? Talking about across 13th?
Across the street.
Across, well, it's across the way.
You don't like, right?
Maybe it's between 11th and 13th. That's not falling, that's not falling, you told me it was happening there.
Yeah, open area.
I have to, be sure I have a look at the map, but I.
If the next is on the back side and no words.
That should be R1 on that side and it does R2 on the other side, the 13th.
I believe, like that half check map. And then, you know, we told them up on them, then we still got axles, still got steel beams, that's defining the travel trailer, but those things still have that too, so.
Well, manufactured home, you gotta open up the can where it's, a manufactured home, their axles and everything stays there, but a modular home, they show up with it, just like they used to move the old buildings, they take everything out from under it, they set it down, they have to completely construct a foundation for it and attach it, and then they're gone.
It's all over manufactured.
Correct.
They set them up on center blocks.
Yes, sir. They can't set them on center blocks, they can set them down, that's the two different things, but manufactured is not allowed in R1, modular is.
Yeah, well, the market, you know, it's on a foundation, and you build a home.
Yes.
Manufactured home. Well, that's the only side they're gonna move it and they're coming in. That's where you have to really look, because we have one that's up there on 15th Street right now, that is a modular home, that's just exactly like.
That's a double wide.
So wait, did the argument, you have to come, wait, Thomas talking about staying as a standard.
The word might say different.
We already told you that.
My concern was bringing them in and putting them, and I would use my place, you know, those other places like.
Well, by law, they're supposed to come in and go through the permit process in order for us to see what's going on, where they're putting it, what they can or can't do, and follow procedures. We do have some that come in on weekends and decide to drop one and say hello. Yeah, yeah, that's happened here recently, so, yeah. That's why, gotta watch it. Alright, any other questions, concerns, comments?
Sam, in a minute, we're gonna be talking about this camper, she's got a different label, it's camper, the same thing as a.
RV?
RV.
It's a travel trailer?
On 15th.
Yep.
She's one of the years for sure, so just wondering about the terminology.
That's, okay. Alright, motion to accept the ordinance regulating mobile homes, manufactured home, or travel trailers, including from 15, travel trailers over 10 years of age, and mobile homes in the city limits of boundary with modifications through legal.
I'd love to, I'd love someone else to.
Have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Have a second?
Yeah, I'll say.
Alright, all in favor say aye. Everybody say aye, you know, Phil Park, aye. Alright, until approval of building permits, we have quite a few.
Yeah, I might have these out of order, is what y'all got out.
Okay.
I was checking on them. Uh, Mary Davis, I don't know, 13, I want to put in a, sort of, about 32. Uh, David Tranquil, 1007 13, uh, I want to build a 24 foot shed, actually long, 41 wood. Uh, want to move in a quarter, we'll be able to put up a 32, and, uh, this is a more important question, Deborah Miller, uh, she wants to put a camper trailer in her house for her office. Everything else should be.
I have one that she didn't talk about, Dalton Royer.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a house at 378?
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, uh, yeah, it's a 25 to 35, it's homes, they're new homes they're gonna build up there. Uh, and they've repaid the lot already, everything should be good to go.
Being a timbered building, is this a metal frame home or?
Uh, I believe it, yes.
Didn't see that, even like a metal skin? I'm afraid metal skin, I don't know, that one provided up some.
Right, so everything is official, setbacks, everything's good?
Yes.
On the others, the only one in question would be the one Deborah Miller, that is trying to put in a camper at her house for her office, and this would not be a temporary placement, this would be a permanent placement, and I believe the camper exceeds the 10 year criteria. So of the permits presented, this will be the only one that we would not accept, being would not meet the criteria set in the ordinance. Anybody have any questions or concerns, concerned? No? Alright, motion to accept the building permits as presented, excluding the Deborah Miller, James Sherman, on 1500 North 15th?
She'll move.
Have a second? All in favor say aye.
Alright.
Thank you, sir. Alright, discuss and take action to close all avenue between South 5th and South 6th Streets. Is this the city charter?
Yeah.
It's behind.
Okay. You got it?
Well, you got it on the.
You guys, well, you've got it on the TV screen up here. The reason we want to do this, this is where we keep all our stockpile of coal and tea and so forth. And we've had problems in the past with people making themselves handy and grow and pick up some weekends and rides and.
It's disappearing?
Uh, materials disappearing, and what we want to do is close Ball Avenue and then take the, I'm gonna call it the north side and the south side, those are half, half a block. And we're gonna fence the entire area. And then we'll put a gate on the west end and the east end of Ball for the trucks to go in and out of. And we're gonna fence it with a barbed wire on top. Three strands of barbed wire, and make it our enclosed stockyard. Uh, Scott said he sees more people with paved driveways now courtesy of the city.
He's tired of the material even when it doesn't fit.
And we don't mind selling people material, we don't like to just give it away.
Right.
But that's our request, is to close Ball so we can fence that entire area. You need your first stockpile, stockyard.
Any questions or concerns concerning it?
If you look at the picture, there's not much living down there.
Right.
Pretty vacant.
Well, this could, this could be good.
Pretty quick. Within the next six weeks.
Do we own all the property that suggested?
Yeah, we own, can you go spread out on that court? If you can see down here on the, on the bottom, you see a house kind of right in the bottom center? We don't own that lot, but we own the one next to it, the vacant lot next to it.
How do we get access to that property there?
Well, there's streets all the way around it. There's another street down below that, was that Davis? It would not cut anybody off from getting to the property.
Is that a paved law street then?
No.
All down the floods on another Davis pavement.
But they are dedicated, public streets.
Yeah.
Everybody's thinking, everybody's looking, everybody's thinking.
I don't know who that is. Yes. Fellow terminal eight street board, we did last, no fellow of Carpool, building in Carpool, what did they?
I ain't guaranteeing, play their.
Yeah, is that? Yeah, is that part of the?
I thought they lived a block path and over, as far as his dad's home place was, it was long. I don't take that seriously, I don't, I don't know, I could be wrong.
I don't think, I thought it could be down there, it's not. You use, or the city owned it.
Right.
I like it one time, even on the count.
You're, John is dead, yes. It's sealed.
And as you can see, in that upper right-hand corner, that, somebody rerouted that street. Probably more straight than what it is now.
Right. Where should be?
There, on that, on the, I call it the east side, the right-hand side. There's a utility line that runs through that, and we would put the fence to the west side of that utility line. So if they needed to get in there.
Say southern.
Do anything to, to, to replace poles. You could be utility place there.
Gotcha.
Anyway, we wanted to clean that area, make peace of, and protect our individuality.
Anybody have a reason up there? There? All right. Do I have a motion to close Ball Avenue between South Fifth and South Sixth Streets for stockpiling our materials? Yes, sir, yes, sir, please.
To do a, anytime you're closing the street, you need to do ordinance, employees the street.
Okay.
And, uh, of course, and we have to do the D, do the D property to us.
Okay.
Just move the joint property on those assets.
Okay.
So, next to June, uh, next to me, I'll have the ordinance to do some of that.
Yes, please. Is everybody okay with that? All right. Do you want us to table it until then? All right. Motion to table closing Ball Avenue between South Fifth and South Sixth until we have the ordinance in place.
She'll move.
Second? All the favors say aye.
All right.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shushy. Right, here's the police activity monthly and annual reports from Staney Burnage.
Okay, uh, for January, we had a total nine arrests, blood accidents, three hundred and seventy-three, false service, hundred and sixteen citations, and a little over nine thousand dollars in court fines. Also included, um, yearly totals, because I didn't have them last time we met. Um, for forty seventeen, we have four thousand, four thousand false service, uh, four hundred and fifty accidents, ninety arrests, um, eight hundred and forty-seven citations, ninety-six accidents. Um, of course, all the numbers are up from last year. Um, I've also put the five-year average of what we are, what we're doing. So, um, average call intake is a little over forty-two hundred. Um, all the four hundred incident reports, nine hundred and thirty arrests, seven hundred citations, and ninety-two accidents.
That's your average over a five-year period, right?
That's the average over a five-year period. I just wanted to bring that up to y'all, just if y'all have any questions or anything about it.
Everybody's talking here.
I don't know, that's the average really high, but y'all have a big year, one year or something?
Um, it varies, um, normally, it's, we average almost around a hundred. So it just depends on.
So it's lower these last couple of years than normal?
So, um, we have very, you know, with Martin Melty, um, in twenty sixteen and myself in twenty seventeen, um, we've had stricter regulations on warrants and whatnot. And so, that's probably brought it down a little bit.
All right, any questions, concerns, chief?
Dan, this medical refuse.
We're gonna give you.
Yeah.
We're gonna.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, yes, sir. That it?
That's it.
All right. Thank you, thank you. All right, here's the city administrator's bi-weekly report, please.
Okay, uh, month of January, what's going forward, we wanted to advance, the city council has been moving. Uh, the winter drawdown continues on the old lake. Uh, currently, we stand at an elevation of sixteen sixty-seven point four feet at the new lake, which is seven tenths of a foot from being full. And we're still releasing water out of the old lake, and probably will for another week, and then we'll shut it off. And we'll have a pool later. The distribution guys, water distribution guys, have been real busy the last few weeks on water leaks, but most of them have been small tubing lines, we haven't had any big major water leaks since the coast fell in January, been doing pretty good there. Most of these tubing lines have been up here between Sixth Street and Broadway in the alley. So we're gonna have to do some line replacement up in there, because we just keep popping those down. Uh, street department's been working at the new lake on the spillway area, uh, clearing the brush. Corey's got a video here showing the brush on the, this is from the backside of the spillway going towards the lake. And all these little five and six-foot mesquites we're clearing out. Uh, the last time we stayed inspected this, uh, about three years ago, they wrote us up for all these little mesquites popping up. So we're gonna get the bigger ones, get them all piled up and burned. Then come springtime, we're gonna spray those smaller mesquites, get that spillway area cleaned up. Uh, the nineteenth of February, we, our only agenda with the Miller View Dual Water Supply Corporation to discuss, hopefully, uh, getting rid of our five hundred acre feet of Miller View dual water. Uh, Gardendale Water Supply Corporation, uh, which is around Miller in Odessa, is showing interest in that acre feet of water. And, uh, hopefully, that, that can get us out of that Miller View dual contract we have until July, uh, with that contract we signed with Abilene, to get rid of that five hundred acre feet of Miller View dual. So, myself, the mayor, anybody else wants to go is welcome to. We also have the representative there with Jack and Martin, who's here.
Please, sir.
Uh, that's the February nineteenth, that's on Monday, that's.
Tell me seven.
Seven.
What is that gonna be?
It'll be at their water treatment plant in nineteen twenty-nine, going to that guy. They moved their offices from Miller View to that water treatment plant. Uh, myself, the mayor, and Rick Morris went to the new elected officials workshop in San Antonio a few weeks ago. And, uh, it was, it was a real good workshop. It basically went over all rules and regulations for cities and councils. And, uh, kinda updated everybody on all the new rules and regs. And also, I had a call from Sprint in Dallas last week, and they've shown an interest of maybe renting space on the tower, we own up here, communications tower. So, I haven't heard from them since. She was gonna get back with me, uh, either this week or next week. Hopefully, we can rent some more space on that communications tower. Other than that, that's about it. Everything's rolling right along.
Next scheduled meeting date is the nineteenth of the fifteenth, we have to change it. Okay.
That's also that Miller View dual meeting.
So we already know they're having that meeting since it's on the, the nineteenth?
Yeah.
Okay.
We just need to get it out of there.
Right. And we already talked about that?
Yeah.
We wanna, we gotta keep it in the same month, so we'll do it on the twenty-sixth?
That'll be the next.
Is everybody okay with February twenty-sixth for the next meeting?
Yeah.
All right. We will do our next council meeting on February twenty-sixth rather than on February nineteenth, and then we will build Miller View on February nineteenth. Everybody mark a calendar, you'll remember, and then you'll get your packets anyway. Just don't show up here on the nineteenth. Unless you wanna go and. All right, anything else? That's it? That's it? All right, here are requests for future agenda items from city councils, anything else that needs to be on the agenda, please? So it's not going, it's anybody talk. All right, move along, now the city council's meeting executive session is authorized by Texas government code section five five one, by zero seven one consultation, city attorney acceptance of city arrestees at. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.